Hey guys, let's go ahead and start. Sue, let's start. We're gonna go ahead and start with roll call. Commissioner Yawar.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales, he's not gonna be able to be here, he's with his mom. Judge Shaw is here, Commissioner Schindel is here.
Here.
Commissioner Hummel's here, he's standing outside. And Carol Suesi with the County Clerk's office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in opening prayer and stay standing for correction.
Good morning Father, we ask you to be with us today as we consider the needs of Karnes County. We thank you for all the blessings we have received, and thank you for our freedom. We ask that you send us rain as you see our needs. Would you sustain and pray? Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all right?
Hi.
We have a file on the agenda that seems to be heard. Lauren, you are actually next. This is to discuss approve, disapprove, and election of Grand V line FIAI architect to provide professional architect engineering services for the additional scope of work on the Karnes County Courthouse Phase 1 project. And I think that should've been in Pete's name, and I stuck it in your quiet.
It was, yeah, it was Commissioner Yawar. I'm sorry, the language to you.
Okay, if you want me to speak. Graham Lunn and his engineer are gonna be here today to meet with Mark Cowan, the courthouse. They're doing a good job of planning for what needs to be done for foundation of courthouse for next phase. We have, I've talked to quite a few people about this process that they're gonna use for state-wide foundation, the injection process where they pump mud underneath it, and it is very good. I haven't heard anything negative about it. It's been very successful. I think that we should use them to continue on courthouse project. So, anyone else wanna make any comment about Graham Lunn? I would make the motion that we intend to use the Grand V line architect to provide professional architectural engineering service for additional scope of work on Karnes County courthouse Phase 1 project. I say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries four zero. Pete, did I print you the copy of this? The Grand Lunn? I think I did. If anybody wants to see this, I think Lauren sent us a, it's the other progress Graham Lunn has done. Will you hand that to Joe, please? It says, his Graham Lunn credential, thanks. Number seven is the acknowledgement of the San Antonio Sweet Bank, December 3rd, 2012, the Fall City Holy Trinity Council Church parking lot, and that's me. We'll be in Fall City, we start distributing at 10:30, we're usually out there about 9:00. And so we'll be in Fall City if anybody's looking for us, that's Monday. Number eight is a presentation regarding guidelines and criteria for inclusion in Karnes County's tax evasion guidelines and criteria. Ross, you wanna do this now, or you wanna wait towards the end, does it matter?
Wait towards the end.
Okay, let's get number eight then. Number nine is to amend the minutes from the September 24th, 2012, regarding Agenda Item Number 5. The motion should state to adopt the August 31st letter that we have with minor changes and a motion that we don't want to mention today, and it's Carol.
I know that y'all are not reading the minutes anymore to approve, and that's fine. And I just wanted this on the record, that when I did these minutes for the 24, I just put in there the standard purpose that I usually use, that a motion was made and action was taken. That for the past two years, I've consistently made the motion state whatever the person making it stated, so I'd like to change that, and I just want that acknowledged, that I'm gonna change these minutes to reflect that. I'm not gonna change these minutes, I'm gonna put it in today's minutes to reflect the changes of September 24th.
Do you need a motion to do that, or just do it? Is there a motion to amend?
I would think it would probably be better to.
I'll make a motion. One second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries four zero. Number 10 is to discuss approve, disapprove, writing a letter of support for Karnes County citizens in reference to objections to a proposed injection well located at Highway 181 and F1353 owned by Karnes County Properties LLC that Cheryl, Tripp, and DeMae. I've seen 'em all.
Good morning, prosecutors and Judge Shaw. We're here again to ask for a letter of support for this injection well that they're trying to put at County Route 1353 and Highway 181. It is imperative that we do all that we can to try to stop this from coming into the ETJ of the city. I understand that there's a difference between the city and the county, and the jurisdictions, and all the businesses, however, we feel that this is something strongly, that we're not opposed to injection wells per se, we're opposed to where they are and where they need to be placed strategically. And so, the county has written, not the county, but the city has written a resolution. I'm not sure if y'all have read that resolution or not, and I'm sure some of y'all that have read it maybe might not agree with the wording on it or whatever. And we were, I just wanna make it clear also as well, that the last time we were here, that we were not asking for any extra help for paying for this. This is something that we as private citizens feel there's a need to stop, and so we're paying our own attorneys for this. We're just asking for your county, the attorney, to help us with writing some kind of a letter or something in our support. And so, and also wanting you to know if any of the commissioners would be willing to go to the hearing and try to help us. I would like to see that the commissioners and the city somehow work together. I read in the paper last week that Fall City, the city has already passed a lot of different ordinances in regards to, and I know that that's not y'all's thing, but it's some things that as a county, we need to really be looking at because more and more of this stuff is coming in, and we just have simply not been prepared. And so, anything that y'all can do to help us with the situation, and it's not just helping us, it is helping the county and the city. And I hope that y'all want to talk. Thank you.
Well Cheryl, before we go forward, before we get going, Cheryl and I did call Senator Zaffarini's office. I've been out there twice with Cheryl.
Yes.
Talked to Shane, and Senator Zaffarini did get with, I can't remember this guy's name ever.
Nathan?
No, the green guy, or...
Oh, Gary Levarne. Gary Levarne.
Okay, so she did talk to him, and what was agreed upon is that she, Senator Zaffarini did talk to Barry Smitherman, with the Railroad Commission.
As a commissioner?
Yeah. And what was agreed upon was that if they were willing to meet prior to the hearing to see if we could work anything out or discuss anything, I did agree to do that. I told them I would go to Austin, and I would do that, if Senator Zaffarini wanted to do that. Now, Commissioners Court Day, that's the 13th, which is the same day as your hearing. So, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle that, 'cause we got some big things coming in that day too. But then I talked to Ross, and I asked him to look at the surrounding areas about what it is that we're looking at with the Railroad Commission. And Ross, you might wanna interject and tell me exactly what you said that we would be looking at.
Typically, what the Railroad Commission looks at for an injection well for oil and gas waste is they look at the effect on surface water, groundwater, and then also, you know, the applicant's compliance history. So, I think that if you were to focus on those things, the effect on groundwater, surface water, the applicant's compliance history, and then also any sort of potential nuisance for, the statute calls affected persons, who are people, not just the general public, but people who actually tend to be impacted by that as well.
And I think our expert witnesses is doing, you know, is doing that.
We did draft this a letter, do you want me to read the letter?
Yes.
And it just says, this to Barry Smitherman, and regarding the application, it says Chairman Smither, am I right in regard to the above referenced application, about which many of my constituents have expressed serious concerns. At the upcoming hearing, please give deference to concerns raised by the area residents and the city council of Karnes City. I respectfully ask that the commission use its authority to ensure the protection not only of the surface water and groundwater, but also to protect all affected persons from potential health hazards and nuisance conditions.
And Tripp is going to speak after me. But I do wanna publicly thank you, Judge Shaw, for twice now you've come to my aid to actually take me out and explain things to show me, and for that, I'm grateful.
You're welcome.
Judge Court, thank you very much. Appreciate the letter, and I understand that may be as much as the county can do at this court, but I think any support that we have from any government-related, you know, places in the county, I think is gonna help. I understand the labor constraints on what the Railroad Commission, you know, may need to look at. Again, sometimes, you know, they might inject a little common sense in some of what they do too, that's a little gray here and there, so I really do appreciate your support, and like that, though, what Cheryl said, I think this is something that cities, of course, county, county itself, you know, we ought to get together and kind of come up with some ordinances or something to kind of protect ourselves. Like I said, we need them, we need these injection wells as part of the industry, as part of what's helping with all of this development, but at the same time, we gotta be smart with that, so appreciate your support.
I need a motion to, you know what, I didn't wanna say to allow me to execute it, but if y'all will make the motion to allow me to execute it, I'll provide a copy to Cheryl, and then I'll send one to Barry Smitherman. Like I said, I can't promise you on the 13th, that just depends on what my agenda looks like, so I'm not gonna leave the county if I got big things on my agenda, but I'll get the letter over here.
Can any of you attending the hearing, that's what we're asking, is we're asking some kind of support for the county to be representative. And all, I mean, the city is already doing something, what is the county doing on their behalf? This injection well is behind homes, and I, you know, the issue is that it's gonna be no. And if we have a county helping the city, helping us to make an effort to stop this injection well, is anybody gonna represent us there in terms of, is anybody that sits with the county as county commissioners, lawyers, judges?
Whose precinct is that?
That'd be my precinct. I had already told y'all I'd be more than willing and happy to go with y'all, I could just catch my eye.
Yes, you have been very supportive. You have been very supportive.
If we could either move that meeting, or I'd just be absent, you know, it's a lot of problems, so I would provide.
Is there any way the meeting can move, I mean, scheduled or two earlier, where y'all can meet earlier, where we do feel that we have some kind of...
I can't change that meeting, 'cause I have bids coming in on that date that was specified that would be open that morning at 9:00.
But you wouldn't mind if Commissioner Hummel was absent?
Not one.
We don't want you to leave, y'all, Tracy.
Oh, big boy.
So that can't be changed. When you say in the paper that those are gonna be open on that date, at that time, in open Commissioners Court, they have to be done.
Paul just said he would be there, so...
Yeah, I mean, there's not much more we can do to that. I got you the letter, we'll do all we can for you. Gone out there, talked to Zaffarini's office, I don't...
My next question is, is it the city's responsibility to implement ordinances so that this doesn't happen again, or is it a combination of the city and the county that, you know, I know that Mr. Fisher, that's a question. I know that Pope and Fall City made an effort to bar before or during the initial part of this oil boom to implement city ordinances to protect the city, and whose responsibility is it? Is it the city? My understanding is we have been talking to different lawyers, and different people, you know, and then...
Cities on their, this is in their ETJ, right? So in a city's ETJ, typically cities have very limited authority in their ETJ, but they have a couple of areas where they can enforce their ordinances in their ETJ. The two big ones are signage and water quality. So, a lot of times, water quality ordinances address runoff and impervious cover and stuff like that, but I would think that a water quality ordinance could also address the types of things that, you know, issues. The statute says when the Railroad Commission looks at injection wells, they look to surface quality, water quality, surface water, and groundwater. So, I would think that it would be within the city's authority if they crafted a water quality ordinance and chose to enforce it in their ETJ, that they could use that as a means of regulating injection wells. Just understand.
Would that include the washouts that they're using? Is that right, correct?
Judge Shaw?
Washout racks.
Washout racks as well? Because they already have the washout rack there.
If it's incorporated into, if it's logically part of a water quality ordinance, then I think it could be included, and they could report it in their ETJ.
So, but there's nothing that they can do, I mean, now, they can't make, in other words, between now and December 13th, they can't, the city can't make an ordinance.
Right, because they would be governed by the law that was in place when the application was made, so you can't change the rules after the application's been filed.
I do have this long sheet that I wanna give Joe, if I can talk Joe, possibly in the publishing, the meat of this in there. The suit regulates oil and gas activities in the Eagle Ford Shell. If we could get you to put that in the paper, Joe, this would give people some guidance, you know, when they call. People are so confused if we're to go with, you know, there's more issues than just your issue, there's a lot of issues out there, and we have, we probably have 27 applications for saltwater disposals right now. So, there's a lot of them out there, and that's a regulation sheet. Carol, let me give you one too.
Judge Shaw, last time, at the last, we were at, there was a, could you please tell Judge Shaw what you told us at the last meeting?
Okay, I had just mentioned that I did the permitting, and that we don't have any guidelines or any ordinances. The application comes in...
Because it's regulated by the Railroad Commission, if I'm, am I right, Ross, or am I wrong?
And so, there's no way that I can deny them if they have their proper paperwork and they're not in the flood zone. That's what we look at, that's it.
Do they look at the residential area?
Most of ours are out in the county, and are leasing from other people, the land.
I mean, it's the safety of the people.
Because she just does... And I said, I'm just doing county, I'll be honest with you.
Yes, she can't do anything today.
They're just telling me what they're gonna build out there, that's all I do, is give them the note of paper and that.
Yeah, Judge?
Yes.
And just for the future, I'm wondering if the county couldn't, you know, just maybe have a question, Fisher, if the county could consider some kind of ordinance saying, well, they have to be 500 feet from residents, or, you know, something like that, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it's like that.
Ross, can you help me with that, 'cause I know you and I talked about that.
Well, I mean, like you said, this is, it's gonna be governed by the Railroad Commission, and there's a real, the law's in sort of a stationary flux with regard to, because there's a recent opinion that says basically, limiting the amount of water somebody can take out is, could be, they didn't rule on it, but could be a taking. So, there's a, it's real gray right now, saying, oh, I know we're not talking about water, we're talking about other minerals, but whether or not that could constitute a physical taking, which was the, the government body on the hook for limiting their ability to do that, it's really unclear right now.
Well, I object if you're making a lot of war.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm sure.
Yeah, we do that either.
That way.
I have a question, can the city, we don't know, we don't know what to do to get this fixed, 'cause we've been to the city, we've been to the county, city, the counties, and also back and forth and everywhere. And so, in order for us to move forward as a county and a city, can, would it be possible for the city attorney to meet with Mr. Fisher, and they can try, or commissioners and the council people meet somehow, because, so that we can get this together, so that we can protect, I don't know how it was, it Fall City was able to do what they did, and Pope and these other cities, that they've already got these ordinances, and to protect their people, but with us just going back and forth from the county to the city, the back, we're still not getting anything, you know, touched.
I don't know if Fall City did it, because they did not involve us, they did it on their own, and that's usually what a municipality does, they make their own ordinances.
Right. But when we were with the city, we weren't getting that.
You've been there, not anymore, but yes, anyway.
I mean, they learned from us what we're going to do.
Yes, yes.
Just let me say one thing, because I am, as a private citizen protesting to saltwater injection wells currently, and we're doing that through the Railroad Commission, and there are different ways to look at it and make sure that the company that's putting in that saltwater injection well has done their due diligence. Because I think counties get reputations, and I don't want Karnes County to have the reputation, you know, from the oil industry, oh yeah, well, let's go put one in in Karnes County, 'cause they're easy, you know? We have to at least be able to stand up and know what the oil companies or the saltwater injection companies should be doing, and we need to make sure they're doing it, because in my case, they did not do all the proper testing, and they do not have the proper equipment in to start injecting, and I don't know what's gonna happen, but at least Karnes County can be known as a county that cares about their citizens and the safety and their water. And just by saying, well, the Railroad Commission has these rules, so they get away with it, that's not so.
Did you have an expert witness, Steve?
Yes.
That found all that out for you?
Yes.
That's the key right there.
We have, we have an expert witness.
There's, and the same thing, we're working, our lawyers are talking, but we have, as a county, we don't wanna become just the county that they say, oh yeah, let's go put it in Karnes, 'cause they're not gonna fight, and they don't care. That's all I'm saying, is let's let everybody know, the oil company, the Railroad Commission knows that we understand there has to be some saltwater injection wells, but they need to do it correctly, they need to do it by the books, and they need to ensure that our water is safe. And if you're not watching them, they don't do that. So, I tell you, I have two right next to my ranch, and I'm watching every single thing they do.
I have another deal that I'm gonna give to Carol.
You have to do that.
And this is from Sarah O'Beal, Karen O'Beala, Sarah, and it's about the injection, the regulation of injection wells, it's about, and it's all in here, it's all in the TCU guidelines, y'all can read that too, and I'll give it to Carol so they can be public record, anybody can get a copy of them.
I have a question for Ross. Do you know what the Railroad Commission guidelines say? 'Cause I, this morning, I just happened to be listening to camera radio, and they were talking about the guidelines that, the ordinance that Fall City adopted, and it was like 60 feet from a roadway, 1,000 feet from a school, 600 from a house, but those may be the very same guidelines that the Railroad, I mean, I don't know.
I think in the permitting process, the Railroad Commission looks at those things that I mentioned, which are the effect on groundwater quality, surface water quality, and then the compliance history of the act.
There's no guidelines with the Railroad Commission, like, so far from a house?
I don't know.
No. I really feel, and talking to different people, it, I know that the Railroad Commission has their guidelines, but the city and the county can also implement ordinances to protect the ETJ, to protect the citizens. I mean, if you have it written down, talking to Mr. Smith, he's the president of the Loso Water System, he's, you know, and this was my question to the city initially, when we started this adventure, I asked the city, whose responsibility is it to implement ordinances? And I said, and what guidelines do, I mean, how can y'all help us? What way do we go? What direction? What kind of support? And basically, initially, you know, I don't think they knew. And they've always been very supportive when we go up there. Mr. Smith said, the president of the, of the Loso, said, man, you know, the city and the county, they were not prepared, their elected officials are the ones that should be protecting the citizens. And I said, well, I'm not here to point fingers. He goes, that's basically the bottom line, is if we need to implement, and that's why I'm asking our lawyer here, our county lawyer, attorney, where do we go? Where do we start? Do we start with the city? Does the city and the county get together? And, you know, in...
Well, I think, in the ETJ, I'd like to see what all city and Pope have done, but I think that the city's going to have with regard to water quality, more authority in its ETJ than the county.
And that's also was a question to them, and they said, basically, we cannot deny water, we're, we cannot deny water to anybody, it's the city and the county. And that's basically what he said, that they could not deny water to anyone, that, you know, so they, they could not do anything. See, our water wells are in Fall City area, are two big water wells in the city. They're in...
Well, and I think that, I mean, I have city clients who, there's limits on what you can do, and like I said, it's sort of a ambiguous area right now, is that how much you can regulate or limit someone's ability to pump stuff out of their ground, out of their land, whether it's minerals, or whether it's water. If it's, if that well's going in and it's close to a well that serves a public water supply, then you may have a little more authority to at least acquire spacing requirements to keep it, because then you can justify saying, well, this is done to protect the public water supply, the well's a service municipality, and so it's gonna turn on things like that, as to how much authority you have, and what's the best way to address it.
Because we're not using the water, the well that we have here in Karnes City, in the city of Karnes City, that water that the people get, they come from Fall City, there's two big wells that we have there. So, Mr. Fisher, you're saying that really, we need to go back to the city again, so that we can make sure and try to prevent this from happening again? If this injection well comes up and it ends up over there in the ETJ, that might set a precedence, and we might be having these things all around our city, and how can our city grow without having these injection wells in the middle of our city?
Well, I think the cities have specific authority to regulate in their ETJ quality, groundwater quality.
And so, would we...
And so, that would be, that's where I would start.
So, we went to the city, so I guess we need to go back to the city and keep pursuing the fact that they must, they must start passing ordinances, is that correct?
Right, a water quality ordinance that goes to enforce their ETJs.
I can't remember something, did we have a motion for that letter, or did I just sign them? What happened?
You just signed it, but I have a question. Wouldn't it be better if that letter came from the entire court, with the entire court's support, rather than just yourself as the judge? I mean, just to rewrite it, everybody sign it? We as the Commissioners Court, not just I?
Don't have to wait for that one, 'cause I'm not doing that one till court's over. But if y'all wanna do that, we can do that. Did I give you one, Carol? I did give it back, and we'll do it over. Y'all don't wanna sign it on the bottom? Tracy, you wanna just sign it? Here, here's a blue pen. Ms. Jonas, did you wanna say something? I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was just waiting. Yes, I'm Mary Louise Jonas. As private citizens, my husband Nolan and I are working on three of these injection well areas, protesting whatever we can do, but we certainly are concerned about 1353, because that's where we live. I could talk all day on the traffic issue, but I won't. But if you want me to say something about it, just come talk to me. Mr. Hummel, thank you for wanting to represent us in Austin at the hearing, we appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
And to the court, I thank you for your time and your trouble and your consideration and support.
Okay, Carol, that one, before y'all leave, we'll sign this out, okay? Okay, did we ever have a motion?
No.
That's where I was going. In reference to item number 10...
Ross, thank you for the clarification.
On the agenda, I make a motion to approve writing a letter of support for Karnes County citizens in reference to objections to a proposed injection well location at Highway 181 and Farm to Market Road 1353 owned by Karnes County Properties LLC. One second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries four zero. Joan, did I give you that paper I said I wanted to read? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, preliminary financial plan is prepared by the county judge, county auditor, Commissioner Pete Gower and Robert Henderson with RDC Capital Market. We did that, and then we went back and worked on it a lot in the door, so you're gonna go to the, there's two copies of this, go to the one that says draft first, or you can go to the, just pick one out, it doesn't matter, they're the same thing. Luana and I went back with Bob Henderson on numerous phone calls... Luana and I went back with Bob Henderson on numerous phone calls to try to figure out how we could write this financial plan for the county. And what we did is we all got together, we took stuff from budget hearings, we invited Pete back in because Pete's kind of got the numbers that he's been working with all these projects that we want to do. And what we did is we, we kind of developed a map for the county to let you know what kind of capital improvement plans we have for the next five years, a preliminary plan of finance, where we're going to be with bonds, where we're going to be with courthouse restoration. Courthouse restoration, I use Sue's numbers that she provided me, that she thought was going to be in line with the Texas Historical Commission. Tells you what we're going to spend this full year, 13, 14, 15, and then it has our capital improvement plan for five years. There's tons of numbers in here, it's the introduction, the financial background, it tells you where we are. It's got maintenance, operation, interest in thinking, we have all that stuff in here. We have general fund reserve, fund balances, our asset replacement fund, our debt, where we're at on debt, and our general fund projects. Everything is listed out in here, it's broke down for you, number by number, project by project, and every single thing that we have in the budget is in this preliminary plan of finance, or this plan of finance. And I have, I gave you a preliminary, and then I gave you one that does not say draft, and the reason being is Luana and I probably beat this thing to death. I don't think there's anything else that we can do with this, unless y'all see something in there that you think needs to be changed, because come January after legislative session, we'll be meeting again, and you know this thing is, it's just a guide, it's a map, it's going to change a lot. And once we start selling bonds, once we start doing stuff, you're going to see capital improvement plans change, you're going to see timelines change. But just so the citizens will have something to, to be able to go to, to know what the county's doing and why we're doing it, and to know our fund balances, that's the big question, is, well, what are the fund balances? We're going to put them all out there for you, and this paper includes every single one of them. You went on 10-year debt obligation, correct, Luana?
Yes.
Because the numbers, if we, if we keep up the sales tax, will be astronomical. We all know once pipelines start coming in, hotel revenue and stuff will change. And so we tried to take all that in consideration to develop this plan with Bob.
Bob Henderson.
Robert Henderson, excuse me, but we call him Bob.
Okay, in reference to...
But if y'all accept it, I would like to, if you think it's okay, we said a preliminary, if we can amend that to make it a final, because I have a draft and I have them in here, if we can amend that to make it a final financial plan, I can give it to Carol to file, and I can also provide a copy to Joe if he'd like to publish it.
I think it probably still should remain titled preliminary because there will be updated changes to it.
That's fine, we can do that. And I have, I have one for Carol to scan without staples in it, I believe. I do. And then I have one for Joe.
In reference to item number 11, I make a motion to approve a preliminary financial plan as prepared by county judge Barbara Niner Shaw, county auditor, and auditor abstract Commissioner Pete Gower and Robert Henderson with RBC Capital Markets.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries four zero.
Will you give your pardon to Carol and Linda Mitchell? Anybody that wants to do that, you can get a copy from, from the county clerk's office. The next item on the agenda is number 12, and that's to discuss approve/disapprove a preliminary contract for the county to purchase five acres of land from Oakland and Sidney Brosick. The land is located at Highway 123 in the Rufus Monkeys survey, abstract 203, and the Antonio Lial survey, abstract number 184, in Carins City, Carins County, Texas, in the amount of $180,000 for a road and bridge department location.
All right, that's on 123, right at the edge of the city, and it's across from Fort Welling, has a little land camp in front of it, there's about, it'd be about 105, according to survey, I don't know, maybe 115 feet of entrance on 123. And we let a 60-foot strip down the edge for a road to go to the rest of the road that's property in the back. We don't have a lot of highway frontage, but it's on 123. I talked with Jeffrey when I first came into office, and he said, "Find some land for a road and bridge location, I've been looking for almost two years." And this is the only one I've really gotten a definite chance to buy. It's a criticism for the price of it, but we can't find land to buy. So this is the best I could find. I realize $36,000 an acre is a high price, but everything else is going to be that.
It's kind of the going rate in Carins.
So, anyway, I'd make a motion that...
Oh, James wanted me to say, I have to ask Sylvia, he said, "Tell him I support the Brosick property." And, I mean, y'all rather Sylvia tell y'all that, I own it second hand.
I did take, you didn't include a survey of it in here, but it's...
I have it.
You have it?
It's just that I can't, to be able to copy the survey, I don't have the ability to be able to copy it.
Pete, is there any more acreage available there, or is that pretty much it?
Well, there's some more behind it, yes. There's, he has about six more acres behind it. See, I really thought this property would be for the EMS and, and the road and bridge. So EMS, if they really want to stay in Kennedy at that location, I thought we'd sell that property when we got moved out of there and put them both in one place and build one building. But they were a lot of others too.
You see? I'm sorry, I did not mean to throw that at you, that was not mine, it's yours.
Okay, for this is Highway 123 for citizens, and it's almost a rectangular shape here. And we have the entrance off 123. Well, we left a 60-foot entrance to the back, but this back here, part of the rest of the property that he owns back here.
What was this piece of property?
It was a landfill, and there's a couple of places, this right up here at the edge has not been used for a landfill.
But there are a few places in here where...
Where you're going to put your buildings and stuff that haven't been a landfill? In other words, you're not going to actually build it up and fill it up?
There shouldn't, there shouldn't have been any landfill right up in this area.
There's, you know, it's seats, whatever, you're going to have to really put three good bases there. The only thing I want to say, if you don't build this, hide out a building, we ain't got nobody to put in. You got to work it. Or just cancel the road and bridge, divide it, whatever, contract it up.
Look, would the price change if you wanted to buy the other six acres? Would it be a little...
I had not discussed that.
That'd be more, more inclined to buy.
All we need is five.
Yeah. I mean, we don't want to have a bunch of extra land.
So the total property available is 11 acres? The total property is 11 acres, but you're just looking to buy five?
I remember saying something about 11 acres somewhere in the past. If it said 11 acres, that would be the rest of this and this around in here. And there's already, on some of this, there's already some other, I think there's a couple of houses here that are not shown on this, but they just belong to Brosick, and he rents them out or what, I don't know. But 11 acres would be the rest of this, this right here is cut out, and that would be the other six acres.
Sorry, I mean, the other six would have joined this?
Go by.
So that's all the land that you can find? That's, I'm sorry, that's an awful lot of money for that little bidding. Are we really cramped that bad? We have to have that land now? And that's my tax dollars that you're talking about, and I'm just, I'd have a very hard time buying five acres for $180,000 for a department. What, can I finish my, can I please finish? Thank you. I asked to be acknowledged, and I have been acknowledged. It's just a lot of money right now. I know we have a lot of money, but we need to be spending it wisely. And like Tracy said, you're going to put a big old building out there for what? 10, 12 people? So what are we doing with the land? What's going out there? Is he going to store material there? You've got two yards right now that you're leasing out, that you could probably use them if you're trying to find a place to store materials. What, where's Jeff, and why is he asking for this? May I move any more explanation from the road and bridge administrator? Jeff?
Jeff.
I mean, he just needs to come up here and tell us why we need $180,000 to buy acres. I'm just asking, you know, what is your purpose for this? Can you not use the two yards that we're leasing right now, the runny yard and Gillette yard, to do the same purpose? I mean, just explain.
Well, we, we work out of one area. Fuel tanks are all there, we got everything, if you got everything in one area, all the people come to one area, and we disperse from there.
Right.
And we usually, if we do, we park, you know, a few pieces of equipment, you know, at the other yards and stuff over here. Lately, we have to, we're just moving equipment around.
So you're looking for a bigger area to do what the Kennedy yard is doing now?
Yeah, we need pipe storage. We've been having, we've been ventilized there with like five pipes with BB guns, shooting out our windshields, golf balls hitting our trucks, windshield being knocked out, and we've had that expense. And we got some trucks that got busted up windows in them again last week, and it's just one of those deals that we can't stop.
So if you put it out in the middle of nowhere, where there really is nobody there, shouldn't be any more protected?
Well, you put your chain link fence around it, and it'll be no different than where we're at now.
So is that the only property that's available?
Pete, Pete looked a lot, and I looked around for some, and Pete come up with that there, and I know land's expensive now, I don't know which way to go with it. EMS, EMS is looking at, and EMS said they can almost use all that property that's there. And our building is getting pretty fragile.
Yeah, it's...
It's rotten, and it's, we got mice problems, we're always poisoning mice in there, our paperwork gets messed up, it's, we got a problem, a big problem.
It just seems like an awful lot of money.
You know, I agree, because it's a lot, but you know what? Have you tried to buy any land, like in a...
Oh, I know, I know.
And Kennedy land is the one higher than it is here.
I know, just anywhere in the county.
All counties are paying ridiculous amounts of property, what they're, what they're buying their property for, for putting up these lands and stuff.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we have to do the same thing.
No, 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 but they're paying a lot more than this is.
No, I don't want to be left with nothing either, that's my concern.
But you have something. You have two other yards that aren't even being used, plus the yard in Kennedy, I'm just...
The runny yard we gave it to the...
Right, but then you have the Gillette yard, I know that's under leased right now, but I just...
How much property is that the Gillette lease?
About an acre and a half.
See, that would be enough, that's there.
By the time we store, and see there in Fall City, we got in trouble with the which feels, the truck drivers come over there and they dump them, pipes, and then we get phone calls, threatening phone calls, because that yard is just, there's nothing there, there's not enough room for anything, and so...
Okay, I'm just wondering.
Well, I don't think the county should purchase all the acreage that's available there, because then that's taking it off the tax rules also, if we're not going to need the full 11 acres.
Don't need five acres, that's enough. It's high enough, it's decent. You think it's going to come down on that, or six? I don't think so. Maybe a couple of thousand, maybe. All right, let's move on.
Pete, do you want to explain that out loud? So, do you want to say that out loud? I heard people do it on the phone.
Okay, well, since I originally thought of this as being a EMS and a county yard vote, that's what my intention was, I asked for five acres. I thought we put the EMS building here, well, EMS wants to stay in Kennedy. All right, we have a need for a public meeting building. Okay, we could save this part right here, and this area here for parking and building, and go ahead and put our road and bridge building and shop in this area, and have this rest of this for parking and storage of equipment, pipes and whatever. There leaves some room right here in front of it for a possible public meeting building area for that. That's my idea, go put it down with five acres.
Apparently EMS wants to stay in Kennedy.
EMS wants to stay in Kennedy, the population, were you here when Johnny Smart was here?
No. Yes, they can't go out so far, and that was too far from the, for their, they would have to become full time. There's a certain...
Labor law.
Yes.
They live there.
Had to live so far.
Yes, there you go, yeah.
I did mention to some of the guys that, and we need to keep big abundant stockpiles of material. We do get hit with a disaster right now, I got the Gillette yard, but it's leased out. We don't have enough room to keep a big stockpile there, and I'm trying to keep a pretty good size one there in Kennedy, but I can't get too big because we get fussed at, because it does start to look all bad, and then the wind blows and the dust blows in everybody, so we're kind of a bad area up there. Plus the paving equipment, I mean, paving and products, I need a bunch of room for that. So the five acres, what you're talking about, Pete, pretty well filled up.
Well, what I was asking Commissioner Yower is this, this additional six acres or whatnot, if he would go to the seller and say, "Look, I know five acres is this much money, but if I buy the other six acres and I'm buying 11 acres from you, can I get it at a lesser price?" So that's what, you know, and I know we say, "Well, that's all we need is five acres." Well, five acres seems like a lot, but when you start parking these trucks that are, how long are they, Jeff? Truck and trailer?
Fifty, fifty something, right at 60.
60 feet long, and they're eight feet wide, and, you know, to turn them around, I think Robbie's on his head. You know, me personally, and I don't know how many trucks you have, but those big trucks, if you were to go out there and park everything that we have on five acres, you would see that five acres is probably not enough room.
I don't know, it's pretty good.
Once you put your fuel tanks there, and you start putting on, and you put buildings there, trust me.
I suppose, and all of them, pick 11 of them, and the stockpiles and the beer a lot you could have on hand.
And that would bring the price per acre down, I think, possibly. And you're right down the road from, from the collection center, so if something's needed right there, it just...
I was going to ask Pete, you said there was an easement? Of how many feet? At this, at this edge, we left 60 feet for him to have a road to the back of this property.
And that 60 feet is on 123?
It's on 123.
And so if we bought the whole piece of ground, we would gain that 60 feet. And if actually the price of land is frontage, when you go buy something, you buy frontage. And so I feel that the 60 feet would be worthwhile, try to purchase the other acreage.
What are we budgeting for this year? 500,000?
Well, I say we buy this five acres now, and then five years, when the oil business is gone, we can buy the rest, it's a 10,000.
And on that facility, also, we'll have to build, build a little reservoir to keep all the oil and the grease that is off our new equipment, because we can have it running everywhere. We got a facility to catch them in now, and, you know, getting rid of it, but that's a lot of things you've got to look at if you don't take acres.
I know I shouldn't ask this. It's another question.
Bye, Carl. Okay. Where'd you go, Pete?
Joe. Want to comment?
Yes, sir.
Y'all do realize, old property area that y'all are looking at, there is veins and veins, I dug a bunch of them, trash buried up there.
Yes, no veins, no pockets.
Yes.
You know, if they'll afford to, some of it doesn't have any veins.
Right.
Not much of it. What I, nice work for, watch what we have buried in all that city, Trey.
All right. Item number 12. I make a motion that we approve preliminary contract for county to purchase five acres of land from Oakland and Sidney Brosick to land location on Highway 123 in Orange County. It's actually in city limits of Orange City, in the amount of $180,000 for road and bridge department location.
Me personally, I'd need a little more, have to do a little more digging into that.
Literally?
I like that, I like that location. I like that, I like, I like that location because of the proximity to the collection center down there and I like the, I like that location, but I don't know, I just...
I think it needs to be checked out, make sure there's no stuff buried where you want to put your building in.
Exactly.
Well, wherever you're going to do anything, the whole area is going to have to be built up.
God, the area.
You're going to, you're going to have to put at least three or four turtle. It stabilizes the making. I'm going to tell you all that right now.
That it? A motion dies for lack of a second. Number thirteen is... Is anybody going to, what's this, a land for Road and Bridge? Do we can anybody find some land? The next one is discuss approve, disapprove purchase of a haul trailer for Road and Bridge.
So on number thirteen, there's no action?
There's no need for an earnest money contract yet.
Somebody first back up. Our, our trailer, we took it to San Antonio to see if we could get it fixed. What happened, the hitch started on hooking. The trailer seen his days, it wore out. And the two knuckles that when you back up and the two knuckles locked together on the bottom to hold the load, they're worn out. They don't make them. You can't weld on those necks because DPS catches you welding on them or an accident happens to somebody along the county. So that's the reason where we got to go out and look for another haul trailer or something that come up that was not seeable. We've been, and we're in desperate need of a haul trailer because we do do a lot of moving around and it's costly on the equipment, moving the equipment around and that's the reason I'm coming here. Those are governmental bids right there from Austin Freightliner is one and that's an Eagle Beaver. It's a, the trailer we have is an Eagle Beaver and they will take our old trailer on Friday. And how much, we're going to discuss it. The guy's supposed to come down next week and talk to me about it. And that trailer is 49,416.96. A trailer from, I even got my Hope papers, I didn't hear enough. Hope was... Yeah, about nine thousand dollars. Yeah, and that's a Load King from Hope, Hope Community. Fifty-eight thousand eight seventy.
Are they both thirty-five tons?
Yes, they're both thirty-five tons. Yes, sir. And they got their own hydraulic system on them where you take the hitch off and back back up and hook it up. They, the trailer's got a lot of improvement on them, but things do wear out. The trailer got bent sometimes in the winter wind, but our neck got bent on it. When it come on hook on the, on the highway for us that one time, that, that didn't help. Luckily, we, the driver called it, the safety latch called it. I built new safety latches, that's what the problem was, but we took it to San Dome and they told us, don't put nothing on it. They had it, they still have it. They've had it there for eight weeks or whatever and they just come to a point, they wrote us, wrote me a letter and I have the letter and I'll share it with you guys next time. They do not recommend that trailer to be used on highway.
Was this the trailer you bought from...
It wasn't Kennedy. And we used it for four years, five years, something like that. Here later, we, we were using it a lot until that happened.
Which one of these do you prefer, the Load King or...?
Eagle Beaver is a cheaper trailer. It's built basically the same way the Load King is. Caterpillar, you always ban more because of their name. You know, the Load King is made by Caterpillar.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of a haul trailer of Road and Bridge, the Eagle Beaver for the amount of 49,416.96.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No, motion carries four zero.
It'll have to be on the agenda to amend the budget because this is not included in the budget, so therefore it cannot be purchased before we amend the budget.
Oh, it's not a budgeted item.
Yes. I just brought this to y'all, but that was going to be my second one after y'all approved it. What are you going to do? Ask for this until I have it approved?
You didn't warn me, Jeff.
So then it'll need to be back on the thirteenth agenda to amend. Do not purchase it before the amendment.
Well, it has to be built first.
So it's, it's the one for 49,416.96?
Don't even order it until it's amended.
Is it this one, the Eagle Beaver, 49,916, that one?
Yes, ma'am.
You going to minus trade-in value?
Minus the trade-in value. He said he will treat us right on that trailer, so.
Will you get us that, that by the thirteenth?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You'll know the trade-in value?
Yes.
We'll know the figure.
Because I'm going to say less trade-in value, but you need to be able to give me something that day. Will you be able to?
I'll bring it to you next week.
Thank you.
Because I'm going to, I'm going to run the trailer up there if I have to because it's almost there, so I might as well get running a little farther down the road and get it from them because the dealers here on this side of Austin. And that was the only, Hope and them were the only two that I found that sold governmental through the buy board and that's, that's the reason we went to Austin. That's where I was pointing to anyway.
Number thirteen is discuss approve, disapprove, is to when steps will be taken to obtain a third party to implement a salary survey for Orange County Offices and Departments. It's you, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am, and that's the reason I'm kind of asking for it. We have to do something to try to get employees into my, into, for help. We're, we're falling more and more behind with defroze and stuff and I think this may help us. If it don't, I'll be quiet after that and we'll just survive with what we have. That's what I'm asking for.
We can't do anything, Jeff. We can't make any changes to our budget. I have a couple of different people that I'm going to get prices from to be able to help us make those changes. I feel your pain because no CDL driver in his right mind is going to work for 12, I mean, it's supply and demand, it's economics. CDL driver is the hottest job in Texas right now and we pay them very well. Speaking from experience, we pay them very well.
And your equipment operators too, man, that's the problem. And that's the problem. We can't get anybody to come to us.
You're not going to get, you're not going to get a decent CDL driver for $12 an hour.
I got some boys that are willing to come back to work for us. Matter of fact, they work for the county. I got one boy that said he'll come back to work for us, but it has to be at a higher salary. You know, what do you do?
There's money that's...
Yes.
But, I mean, we can't, we can't make any changes until then. I don't know. I'm just telling you. But why get it done? I mean, I mean, wait till, wait till 2013. It's not going to take these people long to do that. This is what they do for a living. I think it took them three months to do one. I mean, but to do it in 2012 for a 2013 wage increase, it's going to change. Oh, it would have been done way before October.
It needs to be done by June first.
Yeah. But about February or March is going to be your time to actually bring them to the table and see what they're going to be able to do. I think it's a three-month turnaround. And remember, it's purpose, they don't, they don't go and say it's, it's a position thingy because I've been going back and forth with these guys, trying to talk to them, see what they're going to do. Like, it's not a, it's not, they don't have to survey 100 different positions. I mean, like there's four JPs, there's four commissioners. They're going to write one job description for the commissioners, one for the JPs. It's not eight different job descriptions.
I'm just, I'm just looking, trying to get where we can start doing some more work. I got on, I got new equipment that just come in and started working it and...
I feel your pain. I would hate to know that I was asking for a CDL driver for $12 an hour.
I got truck drivers. I'm training some boys that are within the, within the county. I'm training them, but it's almost scary to put them in a new truck.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we just spent all this money on these trucks and we put a $10, $12 an hour driver in there and he wrecks it or...
I run over that, but I got still, you call system. We had one of the guys come into the yard with my new truck and ran over to Hope Building for me and...
Almost took out that pole.
Almost took the pole out, got my, got my mailbox.
So, I mean, I, Jeff, I have the people out there that do it, that come in and do presentations and stuff. I mean, but to get them to come in now for something we're going to do in July, the figure's going to change between now and July.
Yeah, but I'm going to stay hot on it so we don't forget about it.
And I give your names and you can call them and you can make sure I've called.
But you know where I'm at, so that's why I'm, I'm doing this because we're, we're getting more and more complaints and I get called more names, but I think they're running out names on there already.
Don't worry, Jeff, they'll call me after they get the review. Number sixteen is to approve new members to the employee policy manual. Sharon Cheser for the Sheriff's Office, Brenda Yanishek for the Tax Office, Denise Rodriguez for the District Clerk's Office. And that's fine.
Yeah, we just got data, some people have moved to different positions or have retired, so we just needed to change that. Make a format, just the formality.
Gotcha.
So then a motion to the...
I make a motion to approve new members to employee policy manual. Sharon Cheser, Sheriff's Office, Brenda Yanishek, Tax Office, Denise Rodriguez, Denise, I mean District Clerk's Office.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. The next item on the agenda is discuss, consider, accept and donations to the county Christmas party and the author's body.
That'd be me again, one more time, just, we were kind of...
Go clear your throat and I'll log up here. You have that tech comfortable, bye.
Just, we've had a donation come in from Wardlaw, which we have not received it in for a hundred dollars. We have talked to John Banks again, who says he was willing to donate again. If we got approved by Commissioners Court, I know there was some discussion last year over whether or not it was ethically correct to do it or politically correct to do it. It's just a party we would like to have to show our appreciation for, but harbor county employees due, due throughout the year and to do some camaraderie and have a little family time or whatever and just a time and place has been set, a date, I'm sorry, a date and place has been set. We're just asking that the county will allow us to set a budget come December 13th of any monies that we do receive and spend that money for the party and accept any door prizes possibly also.
Didn't Commissioner Rosales donate his...
Yes, December 14th, he has donated to Benito Juarez for us to have a party there. He is also paying for DJ. It's the same DJ that I believe the Commissioners the last couple of years have pitched in to help pay for.
What do you want for him, Commissioner, 50 or 100?
Well, whatever the Commissioners want. It's the outside people.
No, no, it's not to accept donations for outside. She's trying to make a budget, Carl.
Yeah, it's outside, like in the past...
Speak slow, crawl things slow.
In the past, Purdue, Brandon had donated like a thousand dollars. Wardlaw had donated a hundred dollars. BNG Material had donated 200 or 200, it's about, I'm sorry, 250 dollars. I'll say 250 dollars. 250 dollars. And what we've done is that helped build the building. If we had to rent the building, we went and bought, Michelle went to Walmart on Black Friday and bought door prizes. We've got like TVs, tools sets, things like that. But we haven't done any of that this year. We're just, before we start asking for donations, that would be...
Go ahead and do it, buy, make a motion, just go ahead, do it.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
Number eighteen is payment of bills.
Yes, sir.
I, we did clear that, that was a big deal at Paul's Judicial. Tax attorneys, I think, or somehow it's been a lot if they can do it even. Is there anything on here we need to know a lot of its difference? Is there anything else?
Your first set of bills on page one are still with the courthouse restoration, $35,450.81. On page four, the new striker stretcher for EMS has come in. The actual stretcher itself costs $14,189.28. There is a special plate that had to be installed in the new ambulance to secure that stretcher during transportation for $557.60. It was budgeted for 15,000, so we are well within our budget on that expenditure. Basically, all other expenditures are normal, rather than millet expenditures. You will notice we are paying out rural fire for the quarter of July, August and September, a total of $122,000. $46,500 is to Karn City for fires only. They responded to 31 fires. City of Kennedy has $28,500 for responding to 19 fires. $3,000 to Runge for two fires. 12 fires to Fall City for $18,000 and six fires to Gillette for $9,000. So things have been very busy in the fire departments, thank you mainly to the oil bill, I believe. Total expenses paid over this cycle, $298,387.81.
I make a motion on page ten?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Make a motion for a jury?
No, we got, we got one. Okay, we're going to recess for a second so all of the folks can sit up and get their presentation, please. Can we be quiet? Go ahead, guys.
All right, Judge, Commissioner, thank you for allowing us to do this. As I mentioned last time, our law firm has a relationship with UT Law School and they have it with their legislative lawyering clinic. And every, every semester, we get assigned two law students from UT to work with one of our clients or work on issue with one of our clients. And we, it's good for the law students, it's good for the firm and it's good for the clients because the clients get free work out of it. So this year, when the professor approached me about assigning two students and asked what I had going on, I thought that given, given the issues that y'all are dealing with with the Eagle for shale and the mineral, oil and gas exploration, and just the fact that a lot of counties, including Orange County, are overwhelmed by those things, I wanted them to work on that. And I can tell you from personal experience, I was a county attorney, it feels like a long time ago, 10 years ago, for one of the fastest growing counties in Texas at the time. It was a different kind of growth. It was mostly residential growth and not mineral exploration like y'all are dealing with. But from the time I took office, the theme, the questions that were asked were, where do you get the authority to do that? You know, you have Commissioners who want to regulate things and want to try to address the growth they're dealing with and you've got pushback from whether it's developers or energy companies, people asking, where do you get the authority to do that? And unfortunately, the state statute doesn't give counties a lot of authority, so you've got to kind of find it where you can and make the most out of it. So knowing that, knowing that that's what counties deal with and knowing that y'all are dealing with a lot of issues that you couldn't have foreseen a couple of years ago, that's what I wanted them to work on was how can this, how can the county use the limited authority it has to address some of these issues that it's dealing with? And that tied into the fact that, as you know, your, your tax abatement guidelines and criteria have expired. Whether you want to renew those is not, I'm not making a recommendation that one way or the other, that's completely up to you. But I'll tell you, you're going to have companies, as you know, come and apply for tax abatements and there's obviously widely differing opinions on whether tax abatement's a good thing or tax abatement's a bad thing. But I'll tell you, the way that I'm, the way that I look at this is that tax abatement guidelines and criteria, when someone comes asking for a tax abatement, you've got leverage that you don't have otherwise, that the statute may not give you. And so what I tasked the students with was, help me figure out a way that the county can use its tax abatement guidelines and criteria to deal with the problems that they're facing and to deal with issues that they may not have clear statutory authority to deal with. Because I think when it comes to granting a tax abatement or not granting a tax abatement, but negotiating one, you've got, you've got a lot of leverage because somebody, people want a tax abatement and they want to hire one and they want it for 10 years. And when you're contracting with somebody, it's all up for grabs, whether it's related to your roads or related to public safety. You can demand things that you would not have the authority to demand otherwise. So what I've tasked them with and what they've brought me, and I'll follow up with a formal memo that talks, it says suggested language for tax abatement guidelines and criteria, if y'all are interested in that. But what they're going to talk about today is, I, just for a reminder, your tax abatement guidelines and criteria... guidelines and criteria, the ones that have expired, they don't really address the energy industry. They refer to energy, oil and gas industry, or energy industry one time, I think, but they don't treat those differently than any other kind of industry that would qualify for a tax abatement. And I think that, I think it's logical that because of the impact that the oil and gas industry is having, they warrant some specific consideration, and they ought to be treated differently. And so, what they're recommending is that if you were to renew your tax abatement guidelines and criteria, you could tighten it up, you could have specific provisions that address the oil and gas industry, so that they're treated differently and with specificity that would make sense. So, I'm going to turn it over to the students, they've done a tax abatement guidelines, a recommendation basically, to talk about, and what they've done is looked at other communities that have gone through sort of a boom and bust cycle and tried to anticipate issues. We know what issues y'all are dealing with now, but also what issues you may be dealing with in the future, whether things taper off or whether they keep going full bore. And so, I'm going to turn it over to them. David Marku and Jennifer Goodwilly are, the students have been assigned to Carls County, and they're going to, this is just to generate some discussion and get your feedback, and hopefully, I feel like it's part of my responsibility to help you come up with creative ways to address the issues that y'all are facing, and they've done a very good job of helping to do that. So, I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thanks, Ross.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you very much for having us here today, we appreciate your time, and we'll get right into it. So, our goal here was to try to identify areas where Carls County is likely to face challenges over the coming years, as part of the boom and bust cycle, and try to find ways to minimize the harms and also maybe redirect some of the funds that are sort of loosened up in a tax abatement agreement towards the county. You know, if the abatement agreement is a way for the county to help the abatement partner do business here, we should help, we should make sure that abatement partner is doing business with the county directly and redirects some of that funds, essentially sort of insuring a little bit against the harms that are existing. So, we made seven different recommendations here, and we'll go through them and talk about what one might look for in an abatement agreement guidelines to help ensure that those benefits are captured and Carls can move forward in the future, so.
It's so great to interrupt if you have any suggestions for that. So, the first recommendation we have is to include a requirement that some sort of development plan be included in the abatement agreement. The way that this would help is that a lot of times one of the problems is that the companies come in, they have all the information, and the county's kind of kept in the dark. What a development plan would do is require that the company give more information, have a plan, say what they're doing, and therefore, the county would be able to plan better and have a better idea of what kind of infrastructure needs they would need in the future. So, what we would suggest is, you know, having them, every six months or so, make a, maybe an abatement plan that they could give to the county.
An issue which I think you guys already know...
Go back and go over the details of that issue before, except the bottom.
Yeah, so, some of the specific issues that we would, that they would include in the development plan would be information on how the abatement partner was planning to invest in physical structures, employment plans, and forecast on how plans may change with the energy market fluctuations. This is something that's really unique about the energy market, it's constantly changing, and they have a much better ability to predict what the changes will be like because they're in the industry. And so, that's information that would be really helpful to the county, that they could pass on, be required to pass on through a development plan requirement in the abatement agreement.
So, an issue which you're already familiar with, I believe, is the idea of tax lag, that a bunch of people come in, they're using resources at the county, they're tearing up roads, they're consuming county services, and you don't see revenue from them from sales taxes or property taxes until further down the line. There's no reason you can't ask an abatement partner to pay upfront for the people and the resources that they're using. You know, if you have a sense from, for example, from a development plan, that they're going to be using the roads very heavily for six months of their activities in the county, you can say, we have an estimate of how much it's going to cost, pay us upfront, maybe we credit against your tax bill later in the year, and it doesn't necessarily have to be treated as a tax credit, it could just be a, what we'll call a good faith payment or a participation payment from the abatement partner that they put in front of the county to indicate that they understand that they're using resources and their personnel are using resources, and they want to help you sort of offset some of those costs. So, and it could be on a per-personnel basis, or depending on how they're using county resources in some sort of tractable way, or how much land they're using. So, it's a way for you to sort of prevent against some of the budget downfalls or the harms that you might see if, at the end of the year, the costs are there, but you don't have the revenue just yet.
Yeah, because the fiscal cycle might not follow exactly when your needs will arrive, so this helps to clear that problem. Third issue is a local housing requirement. You know, a lot of transient workers come in with energy industry, and they don't have a place to stay. If they're buying homes in the area, that can drive up property costs, or they might not have a place to go, their salaries might not afford them the ability to purchase real estate or rent, and so, we could have a problem of more homeless people, more crime, and requiring that the abatement partner deal with the housing issue, either provide temporary housing for short-term workers, or set up more long-term housing for the longer-term workers is one way to deal with that issue. It's also a good way to possibly, if they do create short-term housing, make sure that that short-term housing will still have a use after the boom cycle is over. So, have it so that it can be easily turned into a hotel or something like that, and so that way, the community will continue to have the benefit of that infrastructure after the boom cycle passes.
Another step that you can take is requiring abatement partners to use local resources and local businesses to run their own business. One of the issues which companies and counties have faced in Marcella Shale area and in other energy developments out west in the 70s and 80s, is that these large industry operators would come in and they basically drive out local employers by hiring up workers, but they wouldn't be using local resources, they hire people from elsewhere, they get cement from other companies, or they find drilling operations from elsewhere. But you, there's no reason you can't ask an abatement partner to participate in the local economy. You know, if you have a county business or a business in the county, they can do something that the abatement partner needs, compel them to use that local business, it'll keep wages high here, it'll keep jobs here, and it'll make sure that after the boom is gone, when activity starts to decline, these local businesses haven't been driven out of the area and are able to keep on sort of using workers and hiring workers. And this can, this doesn't have to be necessarily limited to material purchases like cement or other facilities, this can be something as simple as, if they're going to have a mess hall, maybe they should use a local food distributor. You know, there's a lot of different ways in which you can use a local purchasing plan, or you can simply make a provision that says that whenever possible, or whenever reasonable, an abatement partner uses a local business to fill one of those needs, to make sure that the assistance that you're handing over to the abatement partner comes back into the county and keeps the county businesses and employers stronger.
Public safety concerns is one of the big issues when an energy company comes in. There are a lot of workers coming in, brought in by these large development partners, that creates a lot of additional crime issues, sexual harassment businesses. What you can do in the abatement agreement is require that they coordinate with local law enforcement officials to give the community whatever they need, if they need more firefighters, you know, that's one thing that was done, you've done it today, there've been a lot of fires, a lot of it associated with the oil industry. In any abatement agreement, you can include that they have to provide enough money for the county to hire additional firefighters, get additional fire trucks, community another police car, get that. That way, the community is staying safe even though there are a lot of workers coming in and the community might be changing a little bit.
And it's a surprise, when large industrial partners come into the area, they're using roads in ways that they just weren't designed for, that weren't anticipated 20 years ago. Something that municipalities typically do when they have these large industrial operators is they require a road integrity study, which basically says that experts are going to come in, they're going to assess the quality of the roads, they're going to assess how they'll be used based on driving patterns and other activities, and how much damage is likely to exist. Ask these companies to make, or to conduct a road integrity study, and ask them to foot the bill for the repairs that are needed. You know, there's no reason that if they can anticipate they're going to cause a million dollars worth of damage to the roads over 10 years, you can't commit them to making up that difference in the county budget. The basic idea here is that if they're, if they're coming in and they're using the facilities in a way that just weren't planned for, there's a way to make them sort of match that difference and cover that balance that might not have been planned for. So, the general idea with these proposals is that, or with these ideas, is that the county is taking a positive step to sort of making this a friendlier business environment for the abatement partners, so we have to ask the abatement partners to come and respond to that in a way that protects the county from their eventual or probable departure, and maybe puts the county in a better situation than it would have been without the sort of proactive steps. And the idea behind a lot of these different elements or different proposals is that we're trying to match the information gap, because they have a sense for what they're going to be doing for the next five or 10 years, or 20 years or 25. And until the county both knows what they're planning on doing and can respond to that or has plans to respond to it, it's at a disadvantage. So, by sort of matching information and compelling the abatement partners to act on that information, we can sort of avoid some of the downfalls that other areas in this country have seen over the last 30 years with this type of energy or mineral development, so.
It's where they capture more benefits for the county as well, you know, you have these companies coming in, might as well get some improvements out of it, you know, better your roads, increase public safety, and abatement agreements are a great vehicle towards that. All right, so our last recommendation is required that any development inside the reinvestment zone be mirrored by development outside the reinvestment zone. The whole idea behind a reinvestment zone is that the company coming in is going to pay, you know, tax benefits from that, they're not going to have to pay taxes, there'll be a tax increment that goes up over time, but if they are also required to develop outside, then all of that money is going to be money that comes in, and you're going to see that in tax revenue. So, requiring, making, doing this requirement is a great way to capture more benefits and, you know, if you, I understand that, you know, the reinvestment zone is maybe, you know, you feel like you shouldn't be giving up those benefits in the form of taxes, but if you require them to develop outside the reinvestment zone as well, then you're not going to lose out in that way. And that's it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
You have any questions?
I guess one of the things that we need to link it down on the road is you talked about abatement guidelines, and ours have expired. We have somebody wanting to come in that does skilled nursing or skill health or something, asking for an abatement, we'll still have to have some kind of criteria in place, right?
Right, I mean, that's the issue, is that aside from the energy companies, your, the abatement guidelines and criteria, and yours pretty much mirror some of the other cities here in the county, I think they all kind of started with the EDC, so they could then mirror what Carls City has done.
Carls County.
Huh?
Carls County.
I think Carls City has adopted something that looked similar to what y'all have adopted. But, you're right, I mean, there's other industries that would qualify for a tax abatement that, you know, would, if they came in now and applied, they may not have any impact on the road, they might not have any impact on public safety, but because you don't have active guidelines, then they may not be able to get one.
I mean, obviously, that's the most important right now, is what these guys just discussed.
Right.
Do you remember back when you worked on one with Mr. Your, Judge Kendall, about there was possibly a nursing site coming in?
There was a, yeah, there was a nurse, there was one that was some sort of...
They're growing about that.
Medical facility or nursing care facility, and then one, and then one energy-related one, the two that I've worked on for Carls County. So, one was energy-related and one was healthcare-related. But right, in your guidelines and criteria, recognize that a healthcare-related facility could qualify for a tax abatement, but right now, with those having been expired, that it wouldn't, I guess.
When you set up guidelines, should you be setting up guidelines with a percentage for industrial development, a percentage for housing development? Should you set up different, is that how you're supposed to set them up, or you just leave that open?
Well, you can either leave it open, or you can say that, I mean, you could address either one and say, well, this kind of, if there's a certain kind of business you want to encourage, then you can say, this will qualify for a five-year abatement, or a 10-year abatement agreement. Well, there's one that you're not as hot on bringing to town, you can say, well, this would only qualify for a five-year, or a ma, I mean, you could build those into your guidelines or...
Or you can set up all of them.
You can do that. I mean, right now, there's not, in the abatements, the guidelines and criteria that are in place, there's no differentiation between industries, right? It says, these are eligible projects, and then, so on one hand, that provides you a lot of flexibility, on the other hand, it doesn't distinguish between an energy company that's having a pretty measurable impact on the county and the quality of life as opposed to a medical facility. And so, if you are interested in renewing your tax abatement guidelines and criteria, I would encourage you to use some of these suggestions and to treat the energy industry to try to address the specific issues that they're creating in the county through those guidelines.
The recommendations we made are tailored towards the energy industry, but these have applications elsewhere. You know, if somebody's going to be coming in and viewing a large housing development, there might be new public safety concerns, and you don't have to structure your abatement agreement or abatement guidelines exclusively towards energy companies. There's a preference at this point because those are the people who are coming in and viewing the most business. But the way that the abatement language works, you can simply say that additional consideration will be given for agreeing to do these things.
A $5 qualification on it.
And those official considerations can apply to any sort of business that looks to come in, and it qualifies otherwise for an abatement agreement.
Sure, if you want a nursing facility, you use local contractors, you are going to write your guidelines in a way that allows for, allows you to encourage them.
Well, I'd be inclined to say that the industry that you're lacking, such as housing that we're lacking in, I would give them a little sweeter deal, a little better abatement, a longer, whatever, and then a nursing home facility. Bob and I would pick to retire first year.
Talk to my roommate, so.
But those kind of industries that we really need here in the county, yes, I would, I'd be inclined to give them a little sweeter abatement, to try to attract them here.
You could do that.
You could even set it up so that someone who comes in and builds houses specifically for oil and gas companies gets a better deal than someone who builds it for other reasons. There's a lot of leeway, because these are ultimately contractual agreements, and you're dealing with them with a willing partner. As long as they voluntarily agree with the provisions, there's a lot of leeway for, to do what you might not be able to do under powers authorized by the state.
Ross, didn't we give Tierra Ponte, didn't we give them a tax abatement?
Yes, that's right, that was another one.
Yeah, I mean, and that's kind of what we need, is rooftops, I mean...
I forgot about that one.
So, I mean, is this something that these guys can work on, you know, it's these ideas that we just threw out, that they could work out, develop, get some new guidelines? I know this is a presentation, but...
Y'all did a really good job.
Yeah. There's a reason they're at UT School Hall.
They sent me a memo, which I've not forwarded on to y'all yet, that has more specifics and specific language, and there's no reason, they've done a lot of the work, and so it shouldn't be hard to mine and finish, but I didn't want it to be totally boring today, so I'm going to do it.
Well, I mean, that would be something that we would, you know, we get accused of doing stuff illegally, so it'd be nice to, I know, we never, and I mean, it would be nice to have something on file in case somebody did apply or something, you know, an application did come along. You don't want to say, you know, no, 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 and then you have some kind of skilled nursing facility or something that, you know, or housing, or something the community really needs.
And remember, if you're going to re-adopt abatement guidelines and criteria, there's going to be public notice required and a public hearing required, so there will be plenty of opportunity for public input. If y'all want to start that process, I think we've done a lot of the work to...
I think that's a great place to start.
Well, I want to thank this...
Thank you very much. And I guess the next item on the agenda is for the jury. I'm taking it, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? I just hear it clear from the jury.